Are we on?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome everybody, but we're missing key players because our usual audience. Is there another meeting tonight?
The Finance Committee will be down shortly, and unfortunately, I believe it's George and his wife's birthday tonight, so he will not be here if you're looking for George.
What about the chicken people?
I do not know where.
The chicken people are?
Chicken people too?
We have chicken people. We got the case of how long it takes the chicken to cross the road, and it's about three years right now. Well, it has more to do with how much, what do you do with chicken poop?
Oh, okay. In Wakefield, right from, we had, just had a whole issue we've done last fall's town meeting over farms who wanted to raise chickens, and we had to have a chicken ordinance and, yeah.
Can you email that to us?
The bylaw?
Yeah.
He's not kidding.
I think it got voted down, so I think, I don't think we have a bylaw that said, but we did have a, what I call a model.
Okay.
Bylaw for dealing with farm animals.
Do you have a town administrator?
Yeah, Steve Mayo.
Steve Mayo?
You know Steve Mayo?
No.
Heather doesn't know where Wake, where that is.
I do too know where Wakefield is.
Wakefield?
Yes, Wakefield.
From Wakefield or Wakefield? Wakefield.
Oh, my cousins used to live in Wakefield, so I know where that is too.
Stonemont Field.
Huh? Down that way, yeah. All right, I'm gonna try and bring this back to Southampton. We did the pledge, we got approval of minutes from February 25th. They should be in your packages. Anybody know what page it starts on?
Yeah.
What page?
Um, page three.
Three?
Three.
All right. Minutes start on?
Do you drive all the way up from Wakefield?
The minutes start on page three.
Do you go all the way up? I wasn't here, so I'm just gonna say.
I would motion to approve the minutes from May, February 25th.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
David's saying.
I was in the Caribbean.
Oh, stop her a minute.
It was a good time.
We have a joint meeting with Donna and a financial advisor and the, oh, and the Finance Committee. Oh, and ASW.
There you go.
There's timing as everything. Post-retirement benefit plan.
That was for us.
Donna, you've got the floor.
Um, well, I'd like to introduce Dan Sherman from Sherman Actuary, who did our OPEB study.
Good evening.
The floor is mine, I think. Um, good evening. Um, what I'd like to do is to turn to page three of my report.
Which is page 11.
Oh.
Oh, my page three.
Is our page 11.
Your page 11. Seventy-five, eighty percent of what you really, really need to know and understand is actually on this page. I'm gonna focus most of my time on this page. I'm gonna start off by saying, what Gadsby did, Government Accounting Standards Board, they issued statements forty-three to forty-five, because up until that point in time, every single thing that you've had promised to employees, you were paying for right now at that point in time, or you did accounting for. For example, somebody works a couple of weeks for you, you could pay them at that point in time. If you're part of Chapter 32 Pension, that's a pre-funded basis, has been since 697, it's passed back in 1987. Everything else is on a current basis, but a few years ago, the Gadsby said, you know what? These cities in town are making promises for portion time of medical benefits, and they're not accounting for them upfront. It's a pay-go system. You're on a pay-go system. Most communities are on a pay-go system, or maybe not most today in Massachusetts, but it's, that's the way it's been working. So basically, what the accounting firm, the accounting standard said, we want you to, quote, "pre-fund" this obligation on your financial statements, so that the readers of your financial statements can understand how big a promise you have made, because up to this point, all they see is the pay-go to retirees for the premium, and there's nothing measured for what the promise is to people who have not retired yet. I'm gonna use Donna as my example. She's been working here, but you've accrued nothing for her portion time of medical benefits. And when she retires, you have to be paying out significant funds until, you know, for longer she's in the program. But during her working career, nothing is getting put on your financial statements. So Gadsby said, that's gotta end. We wanna know what the value is.
When you say nothing, I mean, what is that?
Nothing. Nothing is going on in your financial statements for Donna.
So, in the sense that when she retires, that?
Then it, then it starts.
Then it starts.
It's a pay-go.
So it's, it's all predictive of?
It's all in the future.
It's all predictive. But we want, you want us to be responsible for what may happen in the future.
That's correct. Because what you've, what you've done is, you set up a program that promises to Donna that when you retire from Southampton, we're gonna provide you with medical benefits. That promise is there, but you're not accruing anything for it. Nothing is going in on the financial statements. And what Gadsby says is, we need to under, people need to understand what that promise is upfront, rather than at the end.
Is, would it be determined by, because obviously Donna is an elected, because you're using Donna as?
I'm just using her as an example for you.
But you're, you're talking about non-elected individuals per se, for the most part.
Your police, your fire, your teachers, yeah.
So you have a number?
I have all the people.
You have all, so you, you have a number that would be a, goes on the books as a cost, or as a?
Well, there's a number, there's several numbers. That's what, that's what we're gonna cover. So I'm just trying to lay the groundwork at that.
I'll shut up.
So you have to, what Gadsby says is, measure the value of the promise that you've made with people. So, the first column at the top, it says pays you go four percent. So what Gadsby says, if you do continue pay-go process, then you have to come up with the value of that promise, but you discount the future payments at a low interest rate, and I'm using four percent. There's a whole set of rules behind it, which I won't get into detail, but you have to look, use a low interest rate that's consistent with your general fund. And the four percent discount, again, I'll pick on Donna, twenty-five years from now when she retires, you're gonna start making payments. So that payment, because of time value of money, you have to discount it to today. What is a $15,000 payment twenty years from now worth today? So you have to discount it with an interest rate. And you discount it, in this case?
Isn't it the other way around in reality, though?
Well, what happens is that you start out with today's cost, you inflate it for twenty years because of healthcare trends, right? So today's cost is 5,000. Healthcare trends, you move it out and say twenty years from now it's gonna be 15,000. And they say, well, we owe $15,000 twenty years from now. Well, what's that today? It's gonna be like 6,000, whatever the discount is at four percent. In other words, think about it this way, if you put $6,000 into a bank account today, and it earns four percent, in twenty years, it's gonna cover your $15,000 bill for her medical costs.
Okay.
Okay?
So you're, you're coming back down?
You have to come back down.
So you're decreasing what our, what our cost is right now, knowing that you get an interest over time?
Exactly right. Got it.
Not starting with the whole amount, knowing that it's gonna stay the same amount?
No, it doesn't stay. Yeah, moves. So the, so I measured everything as of June 30th of 2013. Line D, you have no assets, because you don't have a trust fund and nothing set aside. The first thing you do is measure the accrued liability. And I'm gonna start with the retirees. Everybody who's retired is receiving a benefit today. And what you do is you say, okay, if you take, I took every single retiree, you know, I took Joe. Joe's seventy years old, and you're paying him $3,000 a year, so what's the present value of $3,000 per year with inflation for healthcare trend, until he dies? And what's the present value of that? And you add up Joe, and John, and Mary, and everybody else, and you add it all up. So it's a present value of a life annuity, if you will, increasing life annuity, and adds to 2,235,000. So that is the present value of all the obligation you have right now for your retirees.
Is that adjusted for, because you're an actual actuary. That's adjusted for health and stuff, like?
Exactly. There's mortality, there's?
You figured all that into?
There's all kinds of probabilities going in there, exactly. Those are all in here. The healthcare trend, mortality, and so forth. For the active people, it's done a little bit differently. For an active person, I'll, you know, pick on Donna, let's say, I know that, you know, twenty years she's retired, and twenty years from now, the present value of her benefit is, say, 500,000. But the present value may be 500,000, but she's worked for ten years, and she's got twenty yet to go, I take ten thirtieths of that amount to show that this is how much she's accrued for her ten years of service, out of the total thirty years of service that I expect.
That's right.
So it's a proration of her total liability based on years of service. So somebody who's brand new, just started out, they have no accrued liability because they haven't worked, so they have zero. If somebody is in their twenty-ninth year of a thirty-year career, the entire value basically is the accrued benefit, except they got one year left. So it's, it shows, you know, for every single person's year, that liability gets larger and larger until they retire, then everything is gonna pass service basis.
Can I ask a question? Yeah. What happens to the employee who stays five years and never collects? Is that built into the?
Yeah, there's termination assumptions, there's mortality assumptions, disability assumptions.
It's all folded.
So it's all folded into that, yeah. So for the, all your active people, they have accrued liability of roughly $7 million added together. Your total accrued liability is 9.2 million dollars. So this is, you could think of this as like owning a home in mortgage. You went to the bank, you bought a 9.2 million dollar home, and now you're gonna make payments on that. So you're, that's a lump sum accrued liability that you owe for all your retirees and future retirees, is a 9.2 million. Because you have no assets, this is the same number, 9.2. Your foundation is zero because you have no assets. Next number is your covered payroll. The payroll is in here only as a measuring device, so a reader of your financials can say, well, wait a minute, they only have a $9 million unfunded liability, and I'm, I'm trying to decide whether I wanna buy a Southampton bond or a City of Boston bond. But how do I compare one community to another? So what the, what Gadsby said is, take the unfunded liability, divide it by the payroll, and come up with a percentage, which for you is 171.6%. Now, a reader of your financials can, can compare you to Boston, let's say.
When you do the payroll, though, this, this 5.3 mil, does that include the union people who are in a different subset, or this is just non-union individuals?
It's everybody who can receive a portion time of medical benefit, you know, has a possibility of getting it.
But doesn't the union people come into a different category? Because they, their benefits is all sort of negotiated into their contract, and that's a different, like the teachers?
But, but, yeah, they're, they're all in here. All the group is in here, but I value each plan according, each group according to their plan.
Okay.
So it's all brought in together.
It's still our liability.
It's still your liability.
So even though it's in the contract?
Right, that's just how they get to it.
That's how they get to it?
That's how you get to it, yeah.
Because I was just wondering if the liability is less because they're in a union contract, or is it more because they're in a union contract?
Depends on the provisions. So if the union contract has provisions that are more beneficial than, say, non-union people, their relative liability is larger.
Did you get to look at the teachers' contract, dispatches, police, highway? Did you look at their contracts?
I looked at all the benefits and what they receive. I didn't look at the contract. So I received the actual costs and what they re-elected and how much you're gonna get.
Okay.
So that division, so at 171, I can tell you right now, is, looks very good compared to your peers. Most of the peers on a pay-go basis is more like 350, 325%.
So we don't pay our employees well enough?
The, well, you're a 50/50 allocation in terms of co-share, which is less generous than most communities.
Okay.
And your demographics are to your advantage well, because you don't have very many retirees.
Okay.
So the combination of those two things means you're at 171, and it's very favorable for you in terms of readers of your financials comparing to other communities. So that's a good number, 171. Okay. H, the normal cost, 416,000. What this represents is, for all your active people, and only active people, it's a one-year accrual. Donna's gonna work one more year. She's gonna be one year closer to retirement. She's gonna go from fifteen years of service to sixteen years of service. So the value of that one-year accrual is her normal cost. Retirees are not in here, just the active people. And the 416 is the sum of all the normal costs, and I'll go back to my owning a home analogy. Think of this as heat, light, insurance, real estate taxes, all the maintenance. As long as you have active employees, as long as you have a plan, you have a normal cost.
How's that, how's that match up to our, our overall tax base? How does that fit into that? Or do you do any calculations about, you know, what we can get for revenue from taxes and stuff? How does that fit into that? Is that a good number or a bad number?
Well, I, I'm not sure. I said I didn't look at your tax base.
Okay.
But what I can say is that if you were a fully funded system, let's say, you had assets and liabilities were the same, you had $9 million in the bank, what you'd end up paying is just the normal cost, whereas you made it, so like, okay, we paid off our unfunded liability, we burned the mortgage, now all we have to worry about is the heat, light, insurance, real estate taxes and going forward. That's what the 416 is. I'll let somebody who knows your tax base say what the 416 represents in terms of your overall.
I was just thinking, is it something we can afford or not afford? Is it, are we outside the bounds, or is that what the 171 says?
Well, I think, I think when we get down here a little bit lower, and I talk about the second column, let's revisit that question.
Can I have a question? Yeah, is this 416 something that is not funded at all right now?
Correct.
That you have to fund it? So this is an official?
Well, the?
Well, it's subset rate.
Again, I'm gonna get to that in the second column.
I just wanna.
Because the first column is purely accounting. We talk about funding, we're gonna shift to the second column.
But this is money that we're not accounting for.
Correct. So the normal cost is the 416. The 307 is the amortization of the 9 million. You don't have to come up with $9 million right up front. I put in a thirty-year amortization of the 9 million, so that's the 307. So the 416 is the current cost, the 307 is paying the past, the sum is the 723,000. So on your financial statements, the 723,000 is your expense. It's a bookkeeping entry, it's an expense, not cash, expense. It's a difference, so you have two sets of books. You gotta think of this as a cash or budget versus accounting. And the 723 is an accounting expense. Now, what you're doing today is roughly $140,000. That's your current pays-you-go cost. So on your financials in the past, you've been recording roughly $140,000 for your retirees' pay-go. And what you need to do is move to 723,000 for accounting purposes as your expense.
So do we actually, you know, we're, Stonemont was well-developed, tax base was well-set in place when Prop 2 and 1/2 kicked in.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you had all the industry in Stonemont, everything was there.
Yep.
What happened to this small town was that when Prop 2 and 1/2 kicked in, it was a population of 1,500 in Cowtown, okay? Lovely Cowtown. Now it's, it's the, and I don't know if you know what Long Matter is, but it is the bedroom community of this area, and it's 6,000 people. But what happened was, our growth was stuck at 2 and 1/2 percent plus new growth, but our costs went like this.
Sure.
So we're always scraping by.
We are scraping by.
I can't imagine where we would get 720.
Ah.
Because I'm, I'm thinking we had to come up with this money.
No, you don't. Again, this is accounting, this is not budget, this is not cash.
At some point, it's cash.
I'll get to that. I'll get to that. Next column.
Okay.
If, if you're, if you decide to join, roughly, more than 50% of communities in Massachusetts are now doing something on pre-funding, putting money aside, starting to build up assets, starting to do something. And there's a handful of communities, of which Wakefield happens to be one, where we're fully pre-funding our ARC. If you set up a trust fund, and you, and you set monies aside that are geared toward portion time of medical, then you look at what that investment is earning, and if that, if in long-term, you know, investment return, I use eight percent because that's what the state's using for the PRIT fund. The state will accept OPEB money, and I'm using eight percent. So this is, the second column is an example. Gadsby says, okay, if you're pre-funding, and you expect your assets to earn eight percent per year on a long-term basis, then you can use an eight percent discount rate. So let's look at the numbers. The active liability drops from 6.9 million down to 3.2. Again, the power of compounding at eight percent versus compounding at one percent. You need a lot less money if you can earn eight percent on the money that's in the trust. Retirees drop down to 1,600,000. The total obligation drops down to 4.8 million. So that becomes your bogey for funding this obligation is 4.8 million dollars. Your unfunded liabilities are roughly 90% of your payroll. The normal cost drops all the way down to 162,000 dollars. Again, it's a bigger drop because active employees have a longer time period until they, you know, you start paying out. So that discounting at eight percent versus four percent has a much bigger impact for active employees because of the length of time. The amortization's about the same at 262, so your annual required contribution is 425,000. So now, if you wanted to pre-fund, you'd have to come up with 425, of which 140 you're already funding. So your net new money is 284,000 dollars at the bottom. That's what you'd have to come up with to fully pre-fund, if you wanted to do it right off the give-go. Now, there are very, very few communities that take, jump, boom, you know, from pay-go to regular pre-funding, because they don't have the money. And I just heard you say it, you don't have the money. So your bogey is the 284,000. So here's what people are doing, and I use Needham as my example. Needham, about twelve or thirteen years ago, I did a study for them, because they knew this was coming. They had a $4 million, is where they had to be, and they were putting aside, their pay-go is 2 million, so they had to double what they were, you know, budgeting. So I told them what they needed to do is get 4 million, and said, okay, we're gonna attack this. They attacked it two ways. First, they said, we're gonna make some changes to the plan and lower the liability. We're gonna lower the target by making changes to the plan. You've already made some changes to your plan, I'm not sure how much more you could do, but you made some changes. The second thing they did is they said, well, we don't have 2 million dollars. So they went to town meeting that year and asked for 300,000 dollars to put into a trust fund. The year after that, they asked for 400,000. The year after that, they asked for five, and then six, and then seven, they built up. After about ten years, it took them ten years, they're now fully, they have been, fully funding their OPEB obligation. You gotta do the steps. You gotta take baby steps. You can't do this all in one shot.
Can we do it over 100 years?
Uh, I'm not sure that'll work, but.
Twenty, 100 this year?
But the idea is to, is to get a plan. I'm working with several communities, and one of, our regional school district, Manchester Essex School District, they have a five-year plan, where they're gonna increase their, they got, they got the trust fund set up, they're gonna increase their funding a little bit, but they're gonna, they're gonna get there in five years.
Now, when you look at the cost, when you do all these numbers, you're figuring out, because we have various, various aged people getting close to the town. We have a 72-year-old that's still working, he hasn't retired. Do you figure out the total cost on an average date, like you need to come off the 204?
No.
Or is it a gradual blend over the next 30 years or something like that?
Yeah, if you look at page 13, I'm gonna go to the bottom there. 13, this is, this is the assumptions. It's all, there's various assumptions at every single age. So if you look at the first column, when it says disability, this is not all the rates, these are representative rates. So at each age, 45, 46, 47, there's a probability of disability. So what the program does is say, okay, I got a guy who's 46, what's the chance that he becomes disabled? You know, 0.02%. Then you figure out what happens if that, that happens. There's a, if you look at retirement, you got males and females, so at age 50, for example, 1% of males are expected to retire. So there's a probability associated, so every single age, the person's got chances of becoming disabled, dying, terminating, and what have you. And it just runs those people all the way through every single iteration from age to age to age to age. And if, if that happens, what's the liability, what's the normal cost? And that's what the program does. So there's not a termination type date, a set date, it's a flow of dates for up to age 120.
So I guess my question is, how, how long do we have to get to the 424? I mean, how many years do we have?
Oh, depends how aggressive you, or not aggressive you wanna be. It's up to you guys.
So it doesn't have any money?
Well, then it could take a long time.
Well, I mean, how long? How long can we take? I mean, I just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm taking everybody half.
Well, if, if you're, if you're doing a token amount, and you only do it once or twice, you know, and then you skip by four years, your outside auditor will say, you're not pre-funding this, you should be using a 4% discount rate and having these higher liabilities, because you're really not pre-funding. If you come up with a plan and say, in five years, we're gonna go from where we are to fully pre-funding, you can make the argument to your outside auditor that, we have a plan, we're gonna get full funding, we wanna use the eight percent column, because obviously the numbers are that much better.
What's the penalty if the auditor say, we're not doing it?
Then you have to use the first column.
And so we can't do the first column anyway, so what's the penalty?
No, 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 you do the first column, but you, remember, this is all, it's not 723 out of your pocket, 723 on your, on your financial statements. It's not cash.
Right, but say we don't do any of this.
Then, then you have to do the first column.
Say we can't afford the first column.
There's nothing to afford.
You're doing it.
You're doing it, right now.
You're doing it.
You're, so you're spending roughly 140,000 dollars on your retirees today.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right, okay.
You're already doing column, the first column.
First column.
And if you?
What's so bad about doing the first column? What's the downside?
What's the downside?
All right.
Page?
I have to ask these questions, because we go to town meeting and they go, huh?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Page nine. All right, we'll start with page nine. So page nine shows a forecast of what happens if you stay in where you are today. Make no changes, okay, your ARC is your expense, that goes on your financial statements. So your pay-go is the last column. So what happens then is that you see that this, the ARC is larger and larger and larger, it's much greater than the pay-go, and just stays that way. And if you look at the difference between those num, those two numbers, they're pretty large. Big numbers. So let's back up to page seven. So here's, this is where the rubber hits the road. Unfortunately, you guys have just started, so I don't have a lot of examples. On page seven is the calculation of your cost and your net OPEB obligation, what's called a node. And the node is a balance sheet entry, it's not a footnote, it's a balance sheet entry that shows, in this case, 582,000 dollar liability, because your contribution was 140,000, your Your expense was 723. The difference is 582,616. So 582,616 goes on your balance sheet as a liability.
How does that affect our bond rating?
It doesn't help it. The following year, now just imagine, the next year, you got 766 on fiscal 14 as your cost. I don't put the contribution in because we don't know how much you're actually going to pay in 14. 14's not done yet, so that's why I ask blank. But let's just say it's 150,000. 150 from 766 is roughly 616,000 dollars. That's in the column six. And take the 616 plus the 582, and I'm posting a 1.2 million dollar liability on your balance sheet.
It's an unfunded liability.
Unfunded liability. The following year, a million eight, 2 million four, 3 million.
And your bond rating?
Just for a second.
And your bond rating is now gone. Right, but I'm just saying. What changed? Because obviously, if you go back twenty years, worth 20 million dollars on debt, if you did that same sort of math.
Nothing's really changed. You're right on the spot.
It's where you start with.
The rating agencies have known all along that you have a big liability. You just know how much it is. So they've known when they do their ratings whether you got this obligation or not. They know you're there. And they may have guessed at it over the years. But now, they've got hard and fast numbers to look at. And when they look at your numbers and they compare it to your peers, they could say, oh, their obligation is much less than their peers, relative speaking, we're not going to hurt their bond rating. Or they're going to say, wait a minute, they have to come up with, you know, going back on the cash basis, or I should say, page nine. Look at page nine. They're going to look at that pay-go column and say, good heavens, those guys are going to have to come up with 7, 800, a million dollars. And we're not sure they have a tax base to generate a million dollars.
We don't.
To cover it.
We don't. So what's the trend in the Commonwealth, though? I mean, there's a lot of small towns like Southampton. They're just residential tax base, you know, twelve point something percent is what it is. Twelve something on a thousand in town. What do they have in the small towns do? I mean, it's going to be a statewide crisis because a lot of towns are like us.
Yes. And as I said, over half the towns are actually doing something. A token amount, but they're doing something. Because the rating agencies look very favorably at efforts to begin with. Have they measured it? Are you trying to do something about it? Do you have a plan to deal with it? That helps. If you can't put a lot of money into it, okay, someday maybe you will. That helps. But if you do nothing, I know the rating agencies, all three of them, have come out and said, we don't, we consider that a negative.
You can't ignore it anymore. It's been ignored for a long time, and now you can't ignore it. Right, I mean, just you go back ten years, you use the starting point ten years ago, worth 3 million dollars on debt. I mean, if you did your calculations ten years ago with what you're saying, we're already 3 million. That's what I'm saying. It's like, where do you start and where do you trend to?
Right, it's a matter of starting out with, you know, 25,000, just something to get started. If you just set up a trust fund and put in 10 to 25,000 dollars, that will be a favorable in the views of the rating agencies.
And we did set up a trust fund that last annual town meeting. I mean, put a thousand dollars into it, just a nominal to open it, basically. So, I mean, at least we have it started. But this is why I wanted to include the finance committee too, and so that they would understand.
But to finish your question, I'll give you the rest of the answers in terms of why do it, why not do it. There's probably four or five solid reasons to do pre-funding. I've already mentioned, one is the rating agencies. Number two is you show lower liabilities and costs on your financial statements. That helps you out. You set up, anybody familiar with Central Falls, Rhode Island? You heard about the bankruptcy and all that? Yeah, okay, yeah, we're guiding you. They ran out of money. They went into bankruptcy. I was bought in by the state. And I, they said, they have to cut the pension costs from 4 million down to 2 million. They have to cut the medical costs for retirees from 2 million down to a million. Dan figured out a way to doing it. I looked at the plan, the demographics of almost all retirees. The only way you can do that is to cut everybody's pension 50%. And he did. Everybody's pension was cut 50%. Medical was cut to half as well. So that's why chapter 32, back when 697 was passing, '87, you said you had to pre-fund your obligations. You guys are part of Hampshire County Regional? So you have to make the payments. You have, it has to happen. Because you don't want to be in a situation where you're going to tell your, you know, eighty-five-year-old retiree, but by the way, we're cutting your pension in half and we're cutting your medical in half. So having that money set aside is another reason.
But isn't this a national trend, though?
Yes, it is. It's a...
As baby boomers go, suburban towns...
Everybody's investing it.
Right.
Reason number four is that, as we said, and said, we don't want you to keep pushing things up. You are asking the future generation of taxpayers, who may not even be here, to pay for Donna's pension and medical costs, even though they get no benefit from Donna's service. In other words, generational cost shifting has been going on for years. When you go pay-go, you're shifting all the costs to the future for services delivered today. The police and fire, your police and fire are delivering a service today. You paid a salary today. You paid the regular medical today. You paid your pension today, but you're paying for the full-time medical in 20, 30 years. So the next set of taxpayers are paying for it. So there's a cost shifting there that happens. The fifth reason to do this, and I think is the most important, is you're setting up a reserve for a future bad time. You guys probably remember, once upon a time, we got hit with a 15% increase in your medical costs in one year. Blue Cross Blue Shield came in and said, hey, there's an 18% increase in your medical costs. Just a few years ago, we got hit with some of those. If you have assets in a trust fund, and you have some assets built up, the trust fund takes the hit for the 18% increase for your retirees, not your budget. You replenish the fund over years. So when Blue Cross Blue Shield hits you with that 18% bill, it doesn't bust your budget. You've got a cushion. It's a reserve that you can draw down and then replenish over time. Which I think is the strongest reason to pre-fund of all.
So our town budget's about 14 mil. About eight million dollars goes to the school. Eight to nine. And a certain percentage more goes to costs that we have no control over, stuff.
Like pension.
Pension, blah, blah, blah. So we, in finance, we get down to about 3 million dollars. And from that 3 million dollars, we're talking about non-union employees and everything else. So we're always, we always have no money. And I swear to God, I've been on this thing since '04. We never have money. And I don't, and what I'm going to ask you to ask is, if you were an auditor and you're fumbling around and you say, hey, what's Southampton doing these days? You open up our books. What would be the minimum amount to make everybody happy?
Well, here's a fair question before you answer that. In an ideal world, what would we have in the bank today to fix this?
If you were fully funded?
Right.
The 4.8...
No, no, but let's start with where the ideal world is.
You have 4.8 million.
And we would have 4.8 million in our trust fund to cover all our expenses.
The past liabilities.
Past liabilities.
You still have a normal cost of 263 because you have active employees accruing something. Again, it goes back to my mortgage example.
So what was it?
You own a home, so you have to pay real estate.
4.8.
So it's 263 you're going to have no matter what. As long as you have an active...
So in an ideal world, we would have 4.8.
Yeah, 4.8 million.
Today.
You'd be putting aside 263, and then the bank is paying your 140 out of the trust fund. So you'd have to go from 140 up to 262. You have to come up with 120,000 bucks.
The 140 is already basically...
Yeah.
You've already got the 140 budget.
I thought we had to come up with 284.
Well, he said the ideal world where you already have the assets.
So we're down to 120.
Well, but you don't have the assets.
No.
You don't have 4 million in assets.
So we're looking more at a realistic number of 284.
You're looking at 284 of new money.
New money that we, in today's world, we put 284 in this year and start putting that in on a consistent basis.
Right, and if you go back, if you look at page nine or 10, I think it shows the forecasts all the way up. Yeah, page 10.
But Dan, does it go up logarithmically after that, or is it just...
Yeah, look at page 10. You see it, it signs at 424, 442, 462, 466.
Oh, Jesus.
So it goes all the way up. But look out in year 20...
A million dollars a year?
Well, that's 20 years from now. And then, in year 2043, you reach full-funded status. So you burn the mortgage. You no longer have the amortization payments. So at that point, your normal cost is 606.
Which will be 95.
So 606...
It'll only be 95. Putting you in perspective.
So, but what's important in 2043 is you're putting 606 in, but the trust fund is paying out the 1.2 on the right. In other words, your benefit payments are greater than, the pay-go is greater than what you're putting in because of the size of the assets and the dividends and interest that the assets generate pays that difference. It's sort of like pension. Pension's going to look like this someday, sooner than this, but it will look like this.
So we're only putting in 140, right?
About 140.
140. So by looking at the arc, is that what we're looking at?
Yep.
So it's the 424 minus the 140.
Is new money, yes.
So that's the 284.
That's the 280.
And then next year is 300.
Yep.
And then after that is 320.
No, it's not.
340.
442 versus 177 is 270.
Oh, yeah, okay, our normal costs are going up too. Okay, I see. I was just saying, it was always...
And in year three, it's about 270. Year four, it's 268. It actually decreases, your delta actually decreases with time. I'm looking at the difference between the last two columns. The last column is where you are. The second to last column is where you need to be.
Knowing that we can't do any of these numbers, what would the suggestion be as to be the remedy as to what we should do?
But it's something. You got a thousand, so you take a 25,000 for fiscal 15.
And I'm going to look right beyond you to the finance committee.
Put into our budget, but personally, if you say put 25,000, it looks like we're not doing anything. I would say 50, 200,000.
I wrote 50 down on my pad.
Yeah, 50, 200, but I had it in my head.
No, I'm going with Dan. Dan said 20,000. Yeah, but you're only kicking the problem down the road.
Exactly, you're kicking it further down the road. The more you can do, the better.
I mean, it's going to hurt now, but it's going to hurt more for our children, so to speak.
Exactly.
That'll be the main... We've got to remember a couple. One is that we've got to keep doing it every year.
Yeah.
And the second, we're only going to get in trouble, quote-unquote, is when a lot of people retire at the time. We don't have the pay-as-you-go funding in place. We're going to be having more than we actually have.
You could get a spike in your pay-go.
Right. But technically, we could go along this way and be fine. It's just that, when we have a spike. And the other negatives that you have said by not having a funding policy, we do. 50, 200,000 dollars, we're building something. And if we're fortunate enough to go ahead and go, the money that we need to spend is less than we're putting in there. We're going to build this apparently fast. Probably the way to go put in budget for next year.
Yeah, I mean, page 10 is where you want to be.
50 grand.
And then let me broaden the discussion just a little because let's talk about the rating agencies. You, you're, I know that question you're asking is a fair one. I think you asked me, what will keep the auditors happy? I think there's also the question, what will keep the rating agencies happy? Not that you have to, you don't need to keep the rating agencies happy. But I think in terms of whether it's 25,000 or 50,000, that may be the initial payments just to show, okay, we're taking this on. But I think the rating agencies are awfully close to the point, if they're not, that's the point for a lot of communities. They say, but we want to know your prescription. We also understand you're up against the wall, although they may not... They have more of an issue of whether it's your problem or yourself to do it. What the rating agencies want to know is somehow you're taking this liability on responsibly. 100 years won't do it. 10? My good, so I, it's not more than, in fact, you're going to put in 50. But the idea is, look, we're building towards our arc. We hope to be at our arc in this number of years. Or these are the other things we're going to do. Nobody expects you to do it overnight unless you're a very unusual example. But I think the rating agencies expect not to hear something that sounds like you're trying to put it off more, but that you're actually addressing it.
Clark, I just want to ask, Clark. Remember, it's Clark, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have to pay money, right? So we have a project and we have to borrow for. But we're paying this money. How many points would we have to give to borrow money? And what that cost would be, because you have to pay a slightly higher interest rate because your bond rating is a little worse, and what that cost is for any major project, if we're talking about a safety, public safety complex, three or four million dollars in that range. How many points would we have to give up if our bond rating is bad? Versus how much money we're going to take out of the budget every year to put into this?
Well, I'm just being... But there's actually, on that point, there's actually a better question around that. If you don't do anything, your bond goes down a little bit. Let's say you have to put in, you have to pay an extra 25 basis points because they don't like what you're doing on OPEB. That 25 basis points that you're paying goes to the bondholders, the bankers, or whoever goes to Wall Street. If you do something with OPEB, you're paying yourself because it's your assets. It's your trust fund. It doesn't go to Wall Street. In other words, it disappears if you're making the payments on a bond. If you make the payments into here and keep your bond cost lower, then you're paying yourself.
Good point.
I have a question. I miss trust fund. We get down the road, we've got 250,000 dollars in it. Can we touch that trust fund now?
No.
Okay, so I just want to...
Well, and that question comes up a lot. You have to have a brick wall around that money. And some people say, geez, how do we get the money? What if we need that money? And I said, well, wait a minute. Let's say you have 250,000 in your account and some kind of crisis happens, right? You can still use it to pay retiree medical. So if your medical cost then for retirees is 150,000, you can use that 150,000, you can pull it from the trust.
And so delete the...
So then your budget line item goes from 150 to zero, and now you've got 150,000 to use from myself. So you could draw it down.
So part of that question was also, it shouldn't be too easy for people just to say, take it out of there.
We can.
But in your case, we can do that if that's the way to do it.
But you can only draw it down as much as your pay-go cost is. It's 140 grand, right? So you can draw it down. And the other thing, if you put in your trust documents, is if all your obligations are satisfied, let's say Obamacare was not what it is, it became something else altogether, and the feds took over your entire liability, and you've got a million dollars in your account, now what? Well, your trust document should say, if all obligations of this plan are satisfied, any residual assets would go back to town, that covers it. But only if there's no liability.
Do they have a trust act like that? Do they have that?
It's unusual to do. We need a trust act.
Now, just to elaborate on a little, some communities, and I certainly have run into communities that have been very resistant to say, well, I don't want to block the money up in the trust. And have been saying what they call OPEB stabilizations. Those, though, are at the 4% interest rate and thus don't get the benefit of the lower figures.
Because it's not qualified asset.
Right.
And the intent has been, because I've worked with a couple of those communities, they were doing that so we don't get a lot of the negativity when we set it up. But our intent is, in two, three years, as part of that prescription, we're going to convert that into a trust and it's going to be bang, it's going to be gone, unperceivable, as you're describing. But we'll get the benefit of going back to the other interest rate.
Well, the one other comment I want to make relative to this example, which I think is being extremely charitable, 25 basis points. We happen to be living and borrowing in a remarkably low-interest rate environment. That difference will, you can probably expect that difference to be a lot higher in five, six, seven...
So you're saying between triple A and double A is more than 25 basis points? That's what I'm saying. The difference between triple and double, that delta, that's what it's talking about, right? My idea would be more that a community that is seeing an impact on their rating...
Let me get the girls.
Because they aren't convincing the rating agencies they're really taking on OPEB or not, because they're in those rating categories. So I think you're going to see larger spreads, it's going to be more like an A between a double A.
So the annual town meeting, if we go forward, this is a warrant article. So we'll have maybe 100 people there, depending on what other issues are on the annual. And this has been a really bad winter, and the road's been really bad. Been a lot of potholes, a lot of flat tires, broken tire rods. And then we're going to put an article on the warrant that's going to say, hey, for all those town employees that were fixing those roads, we're going to set aside this money. It may be a hard sell.
Do we need to go before the town meeting, or can we just put it as a budget line item in the trust fund that's already...
We have to set it up, though. You have to be, you have to...
So we just have to move money into it.
So what you do is on your healthcare budget, right now, do you have a single line for healthcare?
Yes.
You should have two, because you're going to need to under Gasby, because you need to understand how much is paid for active medical versus retiree medical. And also the life insurance, the retiree life. So you need to segregate them.
So we'll have another, we'll need a warrant up this year. Or can we do it next year?
Probably next year.
We can make a separate line item without having a warrant.
Let's be clear, the budget has to go through town meeting.
Well, no, I think we put it in budget and we...
Right, but, right.
In a healthcare line...
But it's not a separate line item. It's not a separate warrant article.
It's a healthcare line item with a budget.
Right.
Okay, so it's under the omnibus.
This budget went up by fifty thousand because we established...
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Less controversy.
Right.
I've been on Wakefield Finance Committee for seven years now, so I understand how all that stuff works. And I went through two thousand nine as a chairman of the finance committee, so I know the pain that you guys are suffering through, so...
Oh, you have no idea. We almost shut the streetlights, ladies, just before Halloween.
Questions? All right. What do we want to do from here? Do we all see the need for doing this?
Yeah, I don't know. We have a trust fund now, so I don't think we need to have a conversation about should we establish one. There's one there. It's how much do we want to fund it? Is it zero, or is it a multiple?
But do we have fifty thousand that we can, I mean, how much are we...
Well, we're looking forward to fiscal fifteen. We don't have enough money to fund all the requests that we have now. That's another question I got for you after this. But if we're going to establish some funding going into it, now's the time to do it. Perfect time to do it.
Well, we also have our two stabilization funds, and this is essentially, I haven't heard the reference to a stabilization fund, but we have our two that we're always trying to put some money into. Now what we're doing is dividing it three ways, more or less. These three accounts need to get something every year. It's a question of how much we can afford to put in each of them every year.
And some years, we may not get a little bit to all of them or as much?
Right.
I'm not sure the other two right now. Yeah, I, if you already have a, are you running the stabilization fund example for those communities that really are getting in for slowly and have nothing to... I'm not sure their rating agencies would be impressed with your...
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting. I'm just saying, this is another one. We've been struggling for years, for the nine years I've been here, to try and put money into stabilization funds to make the rainy day fund. And this is just a third element that wherever we have some extra money, we have to divide it into this account. You know, I'm not equating it to a stabilization account. I'm just...
It sort of works like one.
Right. But I'm just saying, in our mind, we have to approach this every year, that we have these three accounts, that we have to try and get something in to prevent a disaster from happening somewhere down the road.
What is a disaster?
So Dave, to answer your question, excuse me, operating has a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, fifteen dollars and twenty cents. And capital has a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, nine eighty-three fifty-two.
Did the chief put in for new cruisers this year?
Uh, the chief put in for two new cruisers, fire chief put in for a new vehicle, plus two monitors, which monitors total seventy-six thousand. The fire chief has a very large request this year because he's looking at, but hasn't done in the past, upgraded. And our revenue for a quick first asset, if you can anyone over, last night was less than last year.
Well, it's less than last year because we used the three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand from the free cash to balance.
This year, a hundred and two thousand, I forget?
I have a hundred and two thousand left.
What'd you get for state aid increase this year?
Because that came like the House consented capically, oh, state doesn't make a...
Did it just, was there a new one?
So the revenues here and our requests for...
Well, I mean, and monitors, we could justify out of the ambulance fund, I think.
There's not a whole lot of money in the ambulance.
It was like eighty thousand, I think.
Right now, in the ambulance, there is ninety-seven thousand, six oh three.
At least one of them are there.
One of them borrowing, I think it's from West State today.
Here, we got to give that one back.
But so, I've got a, I've got a, I've got a question on budget. We've seen all departments so far. We've got all the requests in. We're going to put a summary of all the departments together. My question is, do you want us to sit down with you folks and say, okay, here's how much we have, here's what everybody's requesting, and we look at it together to kind of massage them? Or do you want us to massage them first and come in?
That's up to...
I think, I'd like to, I'd like to see them. Yeah, I think we'd like to all be...
We'll massage together?
You know?
I think that's a good way to do it. That way, there's no assumptions on either side.
Right, so there's no division.
We used to have the round table so that by the time we left, everybody was on the same page.
That'd be appropriate.
Sounds good, mate.
Because we go to town meeting, we want to be on the same page.
Yeah, we'll come with some suggestions. We'll just take them from there.
Dan, any other painful parts you want to give us?
I got some good thoughts for you. Pension side, the trust funds, many of them are earning, earned in two thousand thirteen, fifteen, sixteen percent. So Hampshire County, I'm sure, did just as well. So my guess is, they're probably, they're using assets smoothly. You're probably going to get a break on pension the next time you get a bill from them that is going to be roughly the same, unless it would be, you know, up to maybe two or three percent increase. You're not going to get hammered on the pension costs like you did back in probably ten, eleven, and twelve. You probably got hit pretty hard. So the next valuation should be better news than that, because the assets have been performing extremely well. The last five years, the state average is eleven and a half percent return. So, I'll leave you with that.
Thank you.
We OPEB, we should have this done again in three years?
Every two years.
Two years, okay.
How much does it cost?
Well, the initial, because this was the first time, it was eight thousand. Is it that much every time?
Yes, it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay.
I can see where eight thousand dollars would come from.
And by the way, the eight thousand, you should put that in your healthcare budget. It'd be part of the healthcare issue.
We self-fund it, I suppose.
Yeah.
On this issue, are we all in agreement before we depart this issue?
So what do you think, ladies? Forty-five, fifty-two, seventy-three?
Thirty.
Thirty? Do I get thirty-five? Jackie, what do you think?
I'm just looking for the fire hoses for the fire trucks. Nobody's talked about those. For three years, I've been saying, when do we get new fire... I sat in a fire truck in the Memorial Day Parade, actually Fourth of July Parade, and I asked the firemen, as I sat in this beautiful, brand-new truck, I said, oh, this is great. Do you need anything? They said, yeah, I need fire hoses. Still, we haven't gotten them yet. I can't understand that, but...
We were thinking about twice, right?
Yeah, we did.
Another issue, another day.
And when we go home with the budget, we'll see everything and, you know...
I, you're, I'm sorry.
Will we just maybe make recognition that Heather had fifty thousand as a line item?
Yeah.
It'll put it into the process.
Well, we want to, we want to break the health one down into two lines.
Separate line items.
Separate line items, and we want to include on a triannual basis, so eight thou... Biannual. Biannual, eight thousand dollars for...
Can that all go into that fund? We can take...
This report was done in fiscal fourteen, so fiscal fifteen, you don't need the, so in sixteen, you'll need the eight.
Off the track that's...
Can I ask, why don't we dump the...
Yeah, then your, your common outside audit will give you a qualify letter. Do I already get in your... Oh, yeah, they have that for a few years.
So why pay for more?
So yes, there's a downside.
Here, we take the word qualify as a good thing.
That means we're okay.
All right, so the summary was, we need two line items for, for health costs. We need a line item for this, whatever this county is going to be called, and that's it, correct, on that issue? Everybody?
Do we have, do we have the OPEB line item?
But we made sure, okay.
We can have OPEB, we can divide that out. You can just say, OPEB one, OPEB two.
Why we have open one?
Health insurance, OPEB.
Yeah. All right. So we're all, and we'd like to put like fifty, if we can find fifty thousand dollars in pocket change, we'd like to put that into the account.
We'll find it together.
Yeah.
And we'll find it somewhere.
All right.
So Clark, are you here to tell us something, like we have to pay out seventy-five thousand dollars? Are you going to top, Dan?
We just wanted to briefly talk about the whole Moody's thing and submitting the information, which one piece of that was having this OPEB report to try and get our rating back. Another thing that they're probably going to be looking for is if we have some kind of our reserve policy as to how much we want to have in stabilization, like percentage of our annual budget. You know, do we have a policy on that?
Which we talked about that several years ago, Dylan.
And also, annual audits, ideally, I know that we have talked about that, and we are going to have annual audits, but they should be done. The auditors aren't coming until the end of March, but ideally, the audit should be completed by the end of February in order for us to file our, you know, sculptures and...
Do you, are you doing a CAFRA? Are you doing a CAFRA? What do you think, Clark? Should we talk a little bit about ours?
Yeah.
The plan is, you are about to submit a continuing disclosure document. This is an update with your official statement from your last bond, as you're due next week. After next week, when it's in, we'll approach Moody's and say, we've got the OPEB study done, here's a continuing disclosure, here's the FY twelve audit, because they were waiting for that, and start the process of getting the rating back.
And what are we now?
A one.
And what were we?
No, we were A one.
What are you now? Report.
Or is...
You are nothing now.
We're a zero.
You have a withdrawn rating.
Okay.
Your rating was A one.
Okay.
I mean, the good news is that we are hoping to fund the school roof project in, hopefully, in five years to fund our liability of it. So it's, we're not going to go through bond council. It's, so the rating is not going to matter because we're going to do state house notes to fund it. Because we're paying off the liability for the Norris School in fiscal fourteen, so when we budget, are budgeting for fifteen, that was, this year, we paid a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in principal, the Norris.
The Norris is paid off.
This year is our last payment.
What about the library?
And the library was paid last year.
Last year, so these...
So I'm hoping that we're going to use that money, you know, at least a hundred thousand, if not more, to put toward this roof debt and get that paid off before we're looking at funding a public safety complex or something, some other big project. Because it's also a debt exclusion, so we don't want to have too many of those, you know, debt exclusions.
They talked about using, looking at, I think it's six-hundred thousand a year. What's our debt right now, debt payment, six-hundred thousand?
I don't have that.
But I thought it was in that range, six to seven-hundred thousand. And the public safety committee was looking like, well, what does that mean when that debt is paid off? Can we just, because we're surviving, because we're dealing with that debt, how do we expand that debt for another ten, fifteen years to build a safety complex? I think that was part of the process.
But if the debt exclusion, when does the debt exclusion run out? For the, for the school?
That's, that's the school.
So that's, so that's the last...
That's the last year. That's what I'm saying. The library is done, and the school is done. But the roof was a debt exclusion vote, because we didn't know how much it was going to cost.
Right.
When we had approved one point seven million, our shares, we're looking at maybe six-hundred thousand or so, then our share will be. So if we can pay that off in five years, you know, and number one, we don't have to do a serial, well, even if we do do a serial, though, some banks have been having really low rates. But even if we did it year to year, you know, the rates we've been looking at are one percent or more or less.
But I, I don't know, we take a poll around the room, but I don't think the public safety complex can wait five years, but...
No, we have seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of fire...
But maybe before it's funded, we'll be, I mean, because you're borrowing anticipation when you're building it, and then you don't have to go out for permanent financing until after the project's complete. And so everything's going to take time.
Right.
If your target is that public safety building, that's when you ought to be doing, and this is probably a discussion for another night, but ought to be doing fully GAZB compliant audits, you're not currently. That's not necessarily going to keep you, that's not a major problem yet. It may become one in the not real distant future. But at least you've got audits now, and you have a, you have to get the OPEB study, which is very important, because at least now there's a statement of what that liability is. But you won't be facing rating agencies for several years. Donna's mentioned doing this as a serial loan. That doesn't require, that doesn't require much of anything. It doesn't require disclosure, it doesn't require a rating. It's a simple solicitation of local banks and some regional small investment bank in terms of where you buy Hammond, Southampton notes, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year for five years, a hundred-and-twenty thousand a year for five years, and so on. And the point is that with this one excluded debt falling away, you put the debt service in there, and there would be virtually no impact on the tax rate.
The goal.
That's the goal.
That is the goal.
But the town has to approve a continuation of debt.
It's already authorized.
Or just in the roof of a safety complex.
Yeah, no, no, that...
That would be a whole other thing. That's going to be one of the sounds. It's going to be, when is this going to fall away, and when can you, how can you seamlessly...
Make it at least pay.
Yeah. I mean, that's the goal, that's been the goal all along, is that one would drop off as we went along.
So you're going to have a group that says, I want my taxes reduced.
Right, no matter what we do. Anything else we need to tackle on that issue?
So one of the things I'd like to ask of Mike is, is if Donna and Vicki could come up with the recipe, we go through the same things every year doing the budget. There should be like, this is what goes into the budget. This budget, this eight thousand dollars has to be in the recipe. This has to be in there. This has to be in there. This has to be in there. You need the, you need to have a certain percentage of any extra funds will go into the stabilization. It should be like a complete, this is what we're going to do, this is what we did last year, we've done this so many times. This is the process for making the town budget, and it should be just very straightforward.
Well, I mean, we do our budget to get to the finance, because the finance committee and select board that generate the complete budget, so, I mean, we only have so much.
There's a political component to that, and that's this finance committee and the, and the select board.
But there is a certain things that go in, like we missed money for audits.
What a fixed part of your budget.
That's what I'm saying. That's a fixed recipe. That's like, so many onions and potatoes go into the, into the thing, and then you add whatever you want to add at the end. But there is a certain process that has to go through. We do the same thing every year, and every year we stumble over things that we did last year. Oh, we're supposed to do that. And it just would be nice to have a recipe, sit down with finance, and sort of say, this is how we should do it every year, or have some guidelines.
Right. I think, I think, I think it's a political process that we have to go through, and I think on the, on the audit, we may have made, I've been on a couple of committees, and we may have made a conscious decision not to do the audit, and I don't remember now if it was the select board or otherwise, but... We're there now. So, anything else? So we now have Vicki and the revolving funds, I think.
Dan, Clark, are you all set?
Yeah, so we don't want to, we don't want to hold you. I'm sorry. Are you guys staying for the revolving?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice meeting.
Clark, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Take care.
Come on up.
I keep it in the back. I had to bring my mom to here to help us. Um, did I give you guys a copy of this? I don't know. I know you guys have this.
What page? Anybody know what page?
Uh, yes, I'm sure. Um, revolving one side. Um, it's right after the last page of the pay-as-you-go. So it's the very next page when she gets to the end of the OPEB.
It's like page twenty-nine?
Yep. Twenty-nine.
There you go.
So basically, it came, because I wasn't really looking at this previously, the planning board came and said they wanted to spend some money out of that account for some particular purpose. And according to Master of Law, chapter forty-four, this is three E and a half, you can only spend what you actually voted on at town meeting. And so that was limited to ten thousand dollars, and their bill was going to be probably more than that ten thousand dollars. So I can't let them spend the whole thing out of there unless we increase, allowing them to spend out of that revolving fund. I called the DOR. They said, as long as the, the finance committee and the select board vote to increase those funds, because it's not going to cost the town any money, it's going to come out of whatever fees they generate, then we can go ahead and do that. My suggestion would be for this coming budget, we take a look at these particular revolving funds to maybe increase them over the year, because we have been spending more than what we actually voted on to spend in there for the past couple of years. So I don't want that to get as a flag. I don't want the auditors to catch that as a flag and say, oh, well, you didn't vote to actually increase those revolving fund expenditures. So, currently, the three that seem to be, well, the two that seem to be kind of going over year over year are the plumbing inspectors' fees and the electrical inspector fees. I added the planning board on here, because the planning board has like twenty-seven thousand dollars in that account, and they're going to keep, it's going to keep building unless we allow them to spend more than their actual ten thousand dollars if they have something that they need to spend it on.
It is not, they don't have anything.
They don't have anything, and they don't need to spend it.
But what if they keep increasing it over the limit? Can we get some of that back into the town?
No, because it's their...
So if their fees increase over their expenditures, you're always, they're not going to keep increasing the cap because they have more money, is it?
No, no, no.
So what happens to their extra money?
They can only spend ten thousand dollars?
They can spend ten thousand.
Even though they have thirty in their account, they can only spend?
Because that's what we voted on, correct?
All right, but unless you leave the fees of the financial, they've only wanted to spend eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, right?
So why would we, why would we increase it?
Because I talked to John Furman, and he had a, he had a project that he was working on that he was going to have a contract for that was about eleven thousand dollars.
And they talked to you? They haven't talked to us about it?
They can't take it out of like free cash?
No, no.
No, 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 because that's what these fees are generated for, and so...
And then pay us back?
These are used, no.
No.
Well, what do they want to do? Do we know?
I don't remember what it was for.
Maybe somebody should ask him what he wants to do.
I, you know, and he asked me, and I just started looking into this, and I said, well, you need to increase it.
And I don't think, no, I'm spending on it, inappropriate, but I think, I think we should know what it's going to be.
It's just going to increase his spending.
Correct. The fee's already in there. They already collected all those fees.
I'm just, if you keep building up and up and up and up.
So what, how much money does the home inspector have, we look for this question?
They were only, he was only allowed to be, what was, should have spent spent out of there was only eleven thousand dollars.
I don't know. What did they accumulate? You just said that the planning board has twenty-seven thousand. What's the balance of the electrical and the plumbing?
What is he spending in the pumps?
What, what happens with the plumbing and the electrical? They collect fees for building permits. Eighty percent gets dumped in here, and we pay them out eighty percent, and we keep twenty percent. The town only keeps twenty percent.
And the water gets eighty percent as a state?
Correct. And the same thing with the electrical. So this is paying them for all those inspections that they're doing.
So they're, so they're doing more inspections than we're able to pay them out for? Is that what you're saying?
No, the money's there.
No, the money's there.
No, the money's there, but we can't give it to them because the cap is so low.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
The money's there. We can't pay them as much as they're earning because the cap is holding us to a lower number.
Correct.
So do we owe these people money that once that limit gets increased, will all of a sudden pay out?
No. No, no.
So they're up to do it.
They're already past that point.
Oh, yeah, much to go, so technically, we should have paid that off.
We should not have, correct, but it was done before I kind of looked at it and said, wait a minute, you know, we've been doing this coming up.
So historically, well. But I mean, they're not spending, they're only spending it on the inspector fees, and we know where it's going. It's going to pay the inspector for his fees.
Correct.
No other costs come out of that for expenses.
For plumbing and electrical, no.
So but historically, for like, just talking about the planning board, what has been their leftover money at the end of the year? I mean, how, has this been a recent gain in funds, or has it been a historic gain? Do they have 100,000, now it's dwindling down, how's it been changing?
You don't have to, I'm not sure, I haven't, I didn't look back.
We weren't getting, we didn't have the fees that they're getting now, or we didn't have anything to spend on.
So all that happened would be the case if they spent all their money, just, just for the sake of it, they ran out of money in December, how do we go back, how do we back to funding?
They have to collect the fees in order to spend it.
And, and right now, they can collect 100,000, 1,000 fees, because there's a lot of building going on, but they can only spend $10,000.
Correct.
And that's the same, it's probably the same thing with the inspector.
Just say, just for the, just for the sake of something, something happens, now they're in a deficit and they have no money, and they, they don't have any fees coming in, just for the sake.
So they can come to us?
They would come to us and get, and borrow money or get money?
Get money. Well, if they don't have fees coming in, they don't need to get paid, because they didn't need to have the fees.
Say that some.
No, no, he's talking about planning.
Yeah, they could be able to spend anything.
Say that there's some, some situation where that we have opened the gates and they can spend much more money, and they overfigure things, and they spend too much money and they have no money. What does the planning board do at that point? And they need to spend, say, $5,000 or something, but they're not.
They would have to, they would either have to pay that or general fund or their other.
Right, so they would have to come to us for that.
I don't know, because they have a budget now, because when I was there, it was an $800 a year budget, so I don't.
They have a budget, and they also have a.
They have a budget, I don't know how much I dropped off. No, it's never, we got $800. Well, they spend any 28,000.
Planning board has $650 in the general fund.
Budget.
Correct.
And see, back then, we weren't getting fee, we didn't have the fees that they now have, we, we were more relying on the money that Tom gave us.
Do they actually need the 650?
No.
Do they need?
No, they get more money in the town, when you talk about that stuff.
Well, only certain things can be spent out of this revolving fund.
They still need the 650?
We designated it as administrative. So if they're going to pay their legal fees, they can't pay their legal fees out here, they need to pay out of their peer review.
Why can't they?
Because it's only designated for administrative, and we can change that.
Administrative?
If that's what it says in the town meeting, it says administrative.
Administrative, that's a big word.
That concludes legal trials?
I thought that was it, because you do it with the projects that they could review, I mean, I know they kind of, just my memory was they can get.
If that's what the designation of, when you set it up to be administrative was, then that's fine.
I'm not saying like, get subdivision and you need a, a legal opinion like they, they did, everyone thought that's part of what they were earning the money in for, was to cover their expenses.
Because what were their legal fees this year?
I don't know, we just paid the bill.
And we just got, you should have got a bill to.
We got it a few days ago.
No, the planning board gets their own bills.
No, all right, but I'm saying.
We pay the legal fees.
No, no, they pay their own legal fees, the planning board does. If they call, I forgot bills from John Furman for the planning board from Coleman Page, that is.
They got a revolving fund?
Uh, it comes out of peer review, planning board peer review, or the, most of it comes out of the peer review, or it comes out of the general.
Can we, my, my, my thought is this, could, could through their fees, could they be self-sufficient, like the water department or something like that, so they would not need any general funds, so their legal fees and everything would come out of this one fund, and they'd be self-funded, and it would save the town money out of the general fund. Is that possible?
Remember, they're budgeting 600, something like that.
It's because they're doing it already, isn't it?
Yeah.
Pretty much, I mean, you can. So when you find a project, they make, the applicant pays for whatever the peer review's going to be, for whatever the legal fees are going to be, they have set fees, and they have it worked out with Coleman Page.
All right, because Vicki just said it came out of the general.
Well, there's, I don't, no, well, I don't, I'd have to look and see what's actually in the 370 bucks they spent, I don't know the details of what's in that account.
What you're saying is all the, so all the legal fees are paid by the applicant, and the town doesn't pay that?
No.
By the general fund, okay.
So come out of the peer review.
I suppose at some point in time, there could be a problem so significant it exceeds the, the fees earned on a subdivision, I mean, I, I don't know, I've never heard of something.
What happens?
What I'm saying, let's say they earn a, a fee of $1,000, and there's a lawsuit as a result of it, and maybe it's the legal fees, $3,000 for that subdivision, so I mean. Yeah.
No, this year, they've collected $15,200.
And that's probably for the same reason that the inspection fees are in the way they are, because there's so much building going on, they're, they're earning fees in excess of what would normally, normally be.
So what's your recommendation, Vicki?
Increase the fee to 15,000.
Is that what's your?
Only because, you know, I haven't heard back from John Furman, when he asked me originally about this, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, and so I said, well, we would have to increase it, and, you know, I asked him if he would come, and then I never heard back, and so I got some thinking about all the other revolving funds, and that's when I had to look at the electrical and the plumbing and the dog and all that, and.
Well. I'd like to get an update with the balances on these accounts, just at some point in time, aside from this, because it'd be interesting to see where the balances are.
Well, that, um, well, right now, the plumbing inspector is at 11,820.
In his account?
And that's what we've paid him so far.
But what's in his account?
11,820.
That's.
Right now, there's a balance of 639.
So that's all they've got there? So they're just breaking the even balance right there?
Well, that's all, that's what should happen.
Well, should it?
Yes.
He's a revolving.
You know, he gives us 100 bucks, 20%, 20% goes to the town, and 80 dollars he gets.
But just to be the devil's advocate for smaller government, is the, is the planning board charging too much?
At a.
If they have excess money?
But if they do a zoning bylaw or.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, they were going to, they have to change the zoning bylaws, I'll be, it's 1976 or something, then it was done, maybe it wasn't, whatever document he was looking at was from like 1976, he needs to update that.
Right, that's what, that's what I think you're talking about.
That's what I'm saying, is that.
It's going to cost them between 8 and 11,000 dollars, he wasn't sure of the figure.
I think this is a tiny dollar plan, because you don't want to be here that dark, but.
Yeah, but it was from 30 years ago, that they needed to update, that's, thank you for jogging my memory there.
So you don't think they're charging too much because they have excess money? I mean, just to be devil's advocate.
I think our fees are pretty reasonable, from the last time I heard, the people are stupid. Nobody has stopped, nobody has stopped building because of our fees.
We need to increase our dog licensing, but that's a different story.
So, you said it's a joint, is it a joint?
Yes.
All right, do we want to ask John to come in and ask, explain to us what he's, he wants to spend that money on first? The other ones, we know what it's going to.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just raising the limit, we're not, we're not saying you can spend more.
I did that because if he wanted to go through and update and refurbish that, I don't know if it's zoning boards, I don't care what he goes, whatever document he was doing, I don't know whether they continue, because there was, he couldn't spend it in here, and there wasn't enough money that he could spend in here, that I did that just because he decided if he wanted to go ahead and do that, there would be money in here, you don't have to come back and do another.
It's a really reckoning function, isn't it?
It is.
But is it enough or is it too much? I mean, did, but did John?
He doesn't spend it, it doesn't really matter.
But is it enough, what do you need, so?
He said it was between 8 and 11,000 dollars, and there's 10 in there, but he's already used 800 and some odd dollars of it, so.
So you're looking for a motion from, from us, or?
Is it a joint vote, you said?
Yes.
Somebody that make the motion?
I'll make a motion to follow Vicki's recommendation and increase the limit to 15,000.
Do you have a second? I'll second, listen, if we can do that. All right, um, is there any further discussion?
Just do the other two, too.
Well, I figure do them all.
Oh, do them all, separate, okay.
I'm sorry, my, my motion was just to do the planning board, but I make, we draw my motion, John Martin, you know, he moves to second, and we'll just, I'll make a, a motion to approve the, the changes as outlined by Vicki.
Collectively. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll record that as a joint meeting of finance committee, select board, for, for here for finance, for here for select board, it was Indiana's fault.
I would suggest, you know, we go to do the budget this year, we put that article in that we should change these, because every year, it's been the same amount.
Same amount.
We haven't really worked out to see, well, what have we spent out of there?
You got that?
No, thanks.
All right, all right, anything further?
Thank you.
Strong word. Good job.
Thank you, finance committee. Making motion to, I'm just getting back here. Um, what are we signing?
We have to sign that, spark.
Am I signing my life away? Um, we have a, no payroll warrant?
We have a bill warrant.
We had payroll last week.
Oh, all right.
You missed it.
Bill warrant for W14-38 for 154,906.26. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No personnel change, no personnel requisitions, no licensing? E chat?
Wait a minute.
Oop, back.
Heather, on the bill warrant, is there anything on there that I can't sign?
I saw pizza on there or something.
On bill warrant? Yeah, your bills are in there.
So there's sometimes some, I don't know, does she usually, does, was it ready that usually wrote what we could and could not sign?
That was the payroll warrant.
The bill warrant, there was never a problem?
I don't know if she split out the bills, and I know the payroll. I didn't split out the bills.
I saw pizza in there, so I think it was part of the school.
I didn't know if it was an issue, I mean.
Take a look, I didn't do it.
Okay.
I don't know what she did on the pass, I know we did the payroll, but I don't know what the.
I think we did, I always.
We never split the bill upstairs, the two separate ones, I think you just didn't sign it.
Okay.
Why don't you just not sign it?
I don't know, I don't think I have any bills in there anyway, because I missed a set, I missed a.
Liz abstained from voting on the warrant.
I might not have to, because I didn't submit bills.
Well, why bother, there's three of us here, didn't.
Yeah, you can do it.
And then she's second.
Oh, all right.
I didn't.
Jackie's second.
Oh, Jackie's second?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Liz, why bother?
Yep.
Um, e chat?
Where did he go?
That one.
E chat, e, e chat, I can't, e chat, e cat, e cat contract?
Yes, so everyone should have the e cat contract in their packet also, it was returned via email from, I believe this one came from, down at Coleman Page, and it includes his revisions and suggestions.
Do we want to join e chat? E cat, geez, I'll do it wrong.
Do I, yes, I mean, I think it's a good, a good idea.
All right, then do we want to make a motion to sign the contract?
Um, I move to sign the e cat contract.
Is there a second?
I'm going to tell you that I didn't read through the whole thing yet, I'm sorry.
You want, well, when does she want that back by?
She didn't say.
Then why?
But I imagine the sooner the better. No, they have not, e, um, Kathy over 10-5, they have not seen the revisions to the contract.
Oh, all right, then let's back.
You guys have seen them, but they have not.
Oh, go back to the.
Let's back, let's, let's send it to them, and then everybody take time to look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I understand why you're sitting here.
[laughing].
Nor our school, we for reimbursement. It's all yours, Vicki.
So I think you have the, I have another page that was updated that I can give you. Basically, what hap, what happens is, is all the invoices we've paid so far, I go to the MSBA website and enter all of them, based on the codes that are, um, they need everything classified by code, so even if it's an invoice that has, it's $10,000, or even if it's $3,000, there's three, and there's three or four different categories based on what work they've done, I have to split all those codes up into the MSBA. So what happens is, it dumps out the reports that I need to physically mail with all these copies, well, I have to make copies of these yet, of all the invoices and all the backup for the invoices, so they can review it, audit it, in order for them to give us our money back that we've already spent. Um, the OPM needs to sign these, and so doesn't the architect. The architect signed one for me today, I've been in contact with Mark Fuglio, who is the OPM, the architect man, there's a few changes that I need to make on some of his, I had the wrong cost category, and he was on vacation last week, and he was out on the road yesterday, so hopefully he'll have his signed tomorrow, but they require the architect and engineer on their papers, the project manager, which the OPM needs to sign all of them, and then we need to sign them as the eligible applicant. Now, I just kind of assumed that the select board would sign them, since you guys signed all the contracts and everything else, instead of me signing them, so, because when I asked the MSBA, they said, well, whoever your eligible applicant is, should sign. So they're just requiring these forms and all the documentation, so they can review them to say, okay, great, these are all eligible, we have everything we need, here's your money.
So you need a signature?
I do.
On?
All of these.
Is signature on each page?
So, this is the, um, right now, this is what I submitted, uh, one million ninety-one dollars, uh, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, which, and this is what our portion would be, that we would be getting reimbursed, six hundred, three hundred and forty-four dollars, of the first initial money that we've paid out.
This is a request for reimbursement?
Correct, from the MSBA.
For six hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars?
Correct.
Do I have, for the William E. Norris roof, do I have a motion to sign? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It looks like, I guess we're the eligible applicant.
We are, and Tishman will sign these, and the woman at the MSBA said, if you send me three copies with three different signatures, she didn't really care, as long as she had all three signatures. I tried to get them to sign before I brought them here, but, um...
I just screwed that up on you, I thought it was my signature eligible applicant, wants title.
Oh.
So you'll have to wipe me out in Thomas, Southampton.
So, this is, this is two on two, this is the architect's page, this is the owner project.
Does Mike signs here?
Yes, yep, and this one printed on two pages for whatever reason.
So you need to fix that top page there for me, I'm sorry.
So they break it out based on, um, who we paid what to. So like, this is the architect engineer, this is what we paid Reinhardt, this is for Greenwood, who we paid them, there's a second page, because it...
One on the MSBA.
Yep, and then this one would be the OPM, which is Tishman, so...
What does OPM stand for? Owners, Project Manager?
Owner Project Manager, so they're in charge of the entire project, so they, um, you know, they're the ones who got Reinhardt to, they oversee everything, so if Reinhardt doesn't do something, or Greenwood doesn't do something, then...
They're on top of it.
They're on top of what happens, so...
So now you have your bills.
Now, there will be another reimbursement, once we pay the rest of the bills.
How much is that? Just remember, I signed that in the wrong place, I know.
Yeah, um, there's one bill left from Reinhardt that we, that's from November, but we have announced, we have announced, right, so she's going to get that paid. We also have a retained each left from Greenwood, which is the contractor, there's a change order for eight thousand dollars, there's a leak, um, flashing by the...
The vent?
The vent, yes, that they can't do until after the snow and stuff is gone.
Right, right.
So, we owe Greenwood about seventy-eight thousand dollars, yeah.
So we pay them, and then we give them...
We pay them, and then we get fifty-five percent of that back, correct. So, that way I'll have a figure for Donna, to know how much we would need to borrow to...
Sounds like it's about six hundred thousand.
Probably, yeah, yep.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Alright, then I got a DOR letter to cover winter roads?
Yes, Vicki, go away.
I won't go away.
Alright, so Randall approached me last week, back in, on February eleventh, two thousand fourteen, the board had voted to allow deficit spending to cover expenditures necessary to respond to snow and ice events in excess of the established FY two thousand fourteen winter roads budget.
Be clear, what we did is voted a state of emergency.
Yes.
Nothing, that's nothing unusual, it happens on a lot of winters.
I think most towns do it every year to overcome snows.
Well, we've done it most years, I think other than, last year maybe, I think was the only year, I don't remember us doing it.
We did do it last year, because we got money back for that February storm, we got the, no, not October, the February storm.
February storm.
When we got the two feet of snow.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So what Randall needs, and also what Vicki needs for our books, is a signature on this letter going to the DOR, stating that they allow the deficit spending, is in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter forty-four, section thirty-one, with Mike's signature.
Make a motion to have Michael Phelan sign that.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Someday I'm going to find out I owe a million dollars for everything.
Because what happens is, is that you guys voted to deficit spend.
Right.
We need to work the DOR, so when I go to do the tax rate, if we don't have any other funding in other areas to transfer to cover that, we need to be able to put that on our tax recap, and if we didn't get that approved, we're kind of SOL, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So without meeting for review, we're not, we're going to do that another night?
Another night when everybody's here.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we're still figuring out a standard, it's on the list.
Yeah. We, um, hoping to do it when everybody's here.
Welcome.
We have a request for fifty-five E Street, which is one of the houses that we voted a long time ago to do rehab on.
Yes, we received a letter from Pioneer Valley Clinic Commission, FY ten Southampton Community Assistance Program, the owner of the property at fifty-five E Street received housing rehabilitation assistance under the reference program. At this current time, the owner would like to refinance the first mortgage, and is requesting that the balance of the FY ten Southampton Community Assistance Program detailed assignment of proceeds be subordinated. The Pioneer Valley Clinic Commission recommends that we sign the subordination agreement. I also talked over to Donna in the tax office, and she recently released the municipal lien certificate already, so this is just a matter essentially of housekeeping on our end, we just need, look at this, Mike's signature.
All they're doing here is, we had to lien on the property, and now they're refinancing, so we're just going in after.
And I believe it's more that Pioneer Valley Clinic Commission had the lien, we just had a minor interest in doing the work.
Do I have a motion to sign?
Motion to sign the subordination agreement.
All in favor, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill, are you here for anything? I'm sorry, I was ignoring, no.
You just hang it up?
Just...
Just relax. You have any flashbacks back there?
So, if you put that on, Mike, I'll finish notarizing when we're finished. My notarization materials are back in the office.
Alright.
Aren't you excited? We're a one-stop shop there.
Moving in and down the list, bond update we did, building use policy?
Okay, so back in March, I think it was on the first meetings I hung out at, you guys were discussing the building use policy, building use policy at the time was being discussed pertaining to the Senior Citizen Center. Apparently, I don't believe there was actually a resolution to the issue, so it made it back on the agenda. Apparently, there's three different building use policies that we have playing around right now, one is for the Senior Citizen Center, one is for our current building itself, and one is for the library, I don't believe the library wanted to need the packet. I did not put this item on the agenda, but I was told that it was on the agenda, because it was continued from that prior meeting. Taking a look at the two policies I did have in my fingertips, the senior center and also the one that was proposed for our building. Looking at the one proposed for our building, I had asked a few questions, I called the clerk's office first and asked, who uses or rents out any meeting spaces in our building, other than town government departments, committees, boards, commissions, or government employees in general, and the answer was, I don't know if that's ever happened. So then I consulted with Reggie, and I asked the same question, and she said, well, I believe we've done two meetings recently, I said, okay, well, who's done the meetings? And she told me what they were for, I said, okay, who held the meetings? So apparently, one of them was Department of Health, and another similar board or body. So I said, so, apparently, the only things we do in this building are we run things from either our departments, government, you know, department, building, I don't know, whatever I'm saying, boards, commissions, committees, what have you, it's all government-related, or town employee-related, but I believe we have representatives from the state come in every now and then as well. So I said, okay, I don't see the purpose of having currently in place a town hall use policy for this part of the town hall, to enforce on ourselves, I think we're just going to create more chaos, to say, Mike, did you pull out a town hall use policy paperwork for tonight's meeting, you didn't file it with our office, did you have food at that meeting, because you didn't ask prior permission? I think we're just creating trouble where we don't need any.
I don't think we're ever the intent to make it a part of, if it was a town organization or town committee, to make it part of that, but we have had some requests, maybe never granted, but I think we've had a couple of requests to use the building. The question then becomes, do we want to have a policy in place before we get the formal request, or not? My suggestion is, you take a look at those policies and see which one you think is the better one.
Well...
We do have a problem, we've had a problem with security access to a building.
Have we, have we ever granted any use of the building for anyone outside of towns? Because I've asked around, and no one has seen it.
Well, before this was the town hall, everybody used it, the Boy Scouts...
Yeah, but now that it's town hall, in the past two years, has it been used?
But going back to the original grant, the fifty thousand dollar grant for this place, the idea of why we had it so big on this end, was the idea that it would be open for other people to use the property, so if you go back, back to, when did we do this, two thousand and six, five, four, seven?
Eighty-two, one.
So, there was a thought process going in, that as we get the money to redo this place, that it would be open for something, and I forget, I forget exactly what it was.
But was it the whole building, or the senior center part?
Well, I want to, I want to make a point that's, that's clear, I looked at the senior center documents here, there's always been an issue where the senior center thinks they own the building, and it's a very touchy political thing, but there are times when we need space, and I think this may be a cumbersome document that gives away certain rights of the select board for controlling the whole building, because it talks about grant, the senior citizens, the, will grant approval to use that space, they don't have that right.
No.
When we have large elections, or something like that, and we need that space, we use that space, and we don't, this is, this is, I get the intent, but I think they overstep some of their, their boundaries of their rights.
David's right in that, it was never the intent that they would own that end of the building.
Can't we just put those two policies into one?
Well, that's what I'm saying, and my next thing was, I thought it was around alcohol in the building, or something like that, so there's a retirement party, or there's a fundraiser, or something like that, what is the policy for having alcohol in the town hall?
Now that you say that, we sent some group from here to the, they wanted to use here, and we sent them over to the library.
Yeah, the library, the library trustees just had a fundraiser over the library, there was wine and cheese.
Not, well, it wasn't the trustees, but somebody else wanted to use, some private group wanted to...
In the small room that's over the...
Yeah, and we sent them over there to use that building.
So I think that would be a clarification, what's allowed, you know, bear and wine in the building, is it, is it like Conant Park, where you have a whole harness, and you have all that kind of stuff, if there's going to be usage, and it should be very clear, simple and straightforward.
We do have, we must have a use policy for Conant Park, there must be something on the books for Conant.
There's probably all kinds of different documents kicking around.
But I'm just saying, it should be similar to Conant Park, in that the documents that we require from them for using the room, you know, is a whole harness, they've had a whole harness agreement.
Just, just to clarify, so your intent is not to have this policy applied to any town employees, committees, departments, it's to apply to outside users?
Private outside groups.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, only outside.
Because there are times that this, this room is not used, and if somebody wanted to, say, kids from the high school want to put a play on in here, or to tell, to televise it to the town, the cameras are already in place, why couldn't, why couldn't you have a stage here, and the kids could do it?
But you have the same problem you'd have, just a little more compounded than you'd have with the senior centers, there's no access to get inside the building unless we're open to the public, or you'd have to have a town employee...
You'd have to make arrangements, so they already have it, because the key's still over in... The police department.
Yeah, but that key, isn't it only for the senior center section?
No, no, it's for any of us.
So the door?
It's for any of us to get in, we, anybody over that's on the list, there should be an approved list over there.
Oh, yes, but that doesn't, that wouldn't include users coming in?
No, we'd have to add those, we'd have to be a temporary pass to the dispatch, we'd have to, someone who had you, probably, would have to notify dispatch that there's a temporary pass, on X day, this person can pick up the key.
Okay.
And these Hampton Cable might get involved, and they could televise something, or, you know, say, the, what is the Women's Board of League, who holds the debates?
Legal women voters?
Right, so if they wanted to use it for a discussion, I mean, and the town Republican Party has used the place, the town Democratic Party has used the place to hold meetings, so there are civic groups that do use the building.
What I mean, even the firemen's group, possibly, or somebody like that, who may be a quasi-public group, but...
And if they want to do webinars, and we got this thing to work, you could have classes in here, maybe you want to teach a class, so the firefighters could sit in here on a Thursday, and watch a webinar, or something like that, it could be an educational place as well, yeah.
I would tell you to look at it, because we're going to get a request, I think we've had requests, but we've managed not to have.
Well, I'll see if I can take a look, and see if I can't seem to combine all three policies in one, so we're not floating things around, and I'll see what Conant Park has.
Just something very simple...
Less is more.
Yes.
And then, I think we may have to sit down again with the council on aging regarding this request, but I think this oversteps their bounds.
Alright, let's move on to, to the electric policy. We want to default to Western Mass Electric?
Oh, yes, um, did you want to speak on that one?
Yeah.
Ms. Reddy Watt?
Reddy Watt.
Okay, well, after our review, Heather and I met with some of the different vendors here that you see, and, um, our electrical rates have really been out of bounds in the last three months, and right now, we're currently with Hampshire Council of Governments, and they did try in December to get us to have a fixed rate, they did send a letter, so I'm not saying that they weren't trying to convey the importance of having a fixed rate, but we didn't do that, so, we're going to pay these high rates until the end, well, actually, March twenty-fifth, but we can right now default to Western Mass Electric, and I spoke with them, and as you can see, the sample rates there...
What page are you on?
She's looking at the, she's giving me a summary, she's ready to go.
What page is it?
It's the very last.
Fifty-nine.
End, end, go to the end. See that?
I got it, I got it.
Okay, alright, so, so you see HCOG, Hampshire Council of Governments, and then you see Western Mass Electric Company, Constellation, Good Energy and Access Group, okay? We have some brokers and suppliers, and they have given us, for example, HCOG, it's zero point nine one zero, nine cents per kilowatt, watt, uh, per kilowatt hour, fixed at twenty-two months with a signed contract, that has to be signed by either Thursday or Friday. Then Wemco, there are, there are variable rates right there, you see April, May, and June, and then Constellation...
Are these residential rates?
No, this is from the municipal building, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify, this is not the residential aggregation program, that's a whole nother thing that we're going to get into at another time. And then the brokers, and there's a fee also with the brokers, Good Energy and Access Group, and HCOG, as you know, we pay a fee to that company every year. These brokers don't, would not want to lock a, a rate in until the fall, but right now, I would recommend, as does Heather, after looking at these numbers, that we default, HCOG actually said that, Jeff at HCOG said, default right now to Wemco, and then we have a few months to decide what we're going to do.
For how many months?
Well, until June.
So, what's happened over the past couple of months is, we've been getting absolutely slaughtered with the electric...
Variable rate.
Absolutely slaughtered. How it's been described to us from all of these different companies that we've chatted with, is that Wemco as the default, they're kind of like the middle-of-the-road rates, they're always going to be in the center, they're not going to be the highest of the high, they're not going to be the lowest of the low, they're just going to be in the center of the market, whether it's the fixed rates, or whether it is the variable rates, they're always going to be in the center, that's just how it is with Wemco. They're not going, they're not on the market, but brokering for the best rates possible, you know, they're, they're just in the middle. Over the past few months, we've been getting slaughtered with HCOG with our variable rates, we've had, I think it was like nineteen cents, is what we were paying per unit for the past couple of months, I mean slaughtered, we are actually, have something before the finance committee upstairs right now, because we are over our energy bills for this fiscal year already, and we're only in March, like, we can't pay our energy bills.
So if we, if we vote to default today, March eighteen?
If we vote to default, what happens is...
When will we see the bill changed? April first?
I don't know the answer to that, I just, it won't hurt us.
Pardon me, within two weeks, according to, according to the gentleman at Wemco.
And according to, just to let you know, so you're not worried about anything hurting us on HCOG's end, HCOG had a provision in their contract when we signed it, it's clause twenty, termination other, this contract may be terminated without notice by the town at any time prior to the approval of the municipal aggregation plan by the DPU. The DPU has not approved the aggregation plan.
Who's DPU?
Department of Public Utilities.
Boston, who I've talked to. They, HCOG's actually having trouble getting approval from DPU at this time.
Does the rate's too high, or?
It's, it's just HCOG, I don't, I can't give you the information, perhaps when we have HCOG before us, they can explain better.
That's the other thing, we, we've asked the different vendors to come in and talk, because now we have, if we default until June, we have some time to discuss all the different, um, energy needs they can supply us, or broker for us, and, um, HCOG, actually, Jeff did say, you know, that we could go to Wemco right now, to get our rates done.
What happens in April or May, if we're looking at this rate from Wemco, and the HCOG is lower, do you go, oh, by the way, I want to go back to the HCOG?
Yeah.
That's what you do?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
Just like that?
Just like that, but then, what these companies do, they look ahead, like, all of these rates were not just done just because of supply and demand, especially the brokers, they buy power prior to even...
They're buying the futures.
Yeah, they're buying the futures, and so it's really complicated, and I think if they come in and explain it to everybody, then we'll understand.
It's like pork bellies.
Yeah.
It's crapshoot, no matter what you do.
One thing, a lot of them also expressed to us, was that, one of the best times to purchase energy is, and to go into a fixed rate, is when you're getting into the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, that that's a good rate, one, or a good time to purchase. One thing that many of them expressed, which was really great of them, was that, you know, you don't want to really look at the numbers, you want to look at more, what can you afford, and find a number that works for you. So you're looking at, okay, this is what we can expend on our energy bills, and then wait for the number to match and line it up. One thing that some of these can do for us, especially the brokers, which is nice, an example would be Good Energy, I can't tell you about Access Group, and I can't tell you about HCOG, we have not met with them when I've been on board, but Good Energy, what they do, is they're a big brokerage company, and I mean big, they deal with national groups for energy, they put out the bid when they're ready to do it, usually in the fall, they like to go for the low numbers, so they'll put out the bid, and they get back all the numbers, and they come in and they say, okay, here's our numbers, here's our options, what do you think? And then you have the opportunity to say, no, I'm sorry, thanks, but no thanks, and you move on. They also do something that's pretty cool, which is, they actually promote it, they're the ones who do the outreach to the consumers, they put the information, this is, I'm sorry, I'm getting into residential, I don't mean to change subject, but going back to the Wemco thing, if you guys would like, if this board would like to default, that's something you guys can do by a vote, and then, Mike, Mike, you can sign a letter, and we can even send them a letter, as well as call.
Alright, it seems like a very basics assumption here.
Where's Jackie?
But I do want to say, with Constellation, we have a local representative here, a person that lives in Southampton, and he's done a good job in explaining what they can offer, they don't have any fees, and their rates are, again, they look ahead, and they're a supplier, and they're a viable company too to consider, and Access Group, a broker, I talked to the gentleman that works there, and he actually has a seven cent deal with Belcher Town, I think it's like six or seven months, so he worked out a deal with them, so they, you know, it's timing, and we just have to sit down, hash out the numbers.
Belcher Town is not part of HCOG?
No. No.
The chairman of HCOG is a town clerk in Belcher Town.
No, they did the residential, no.
It was the residential aggregation, they did not...
They did the residential aggregation, but with...
They did do it, or they didn't?
I think they did, I think the municipal for the, for the access group.
They rejected one of them.
Yeah.
Bill did not sign that one.
I think it was the municipal.
Okay. So you want to make a motion, Jacky?
Somebody make it.
Okay, I move to default to Wemco for our energy needs at this point.
There are second.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor.
Mike, can I ask Jackie a question? In Agawam, there have been a lot of solar panels put up, fields of solar panels. Do you mind looking into that? Because we do have some land in town, town land, that might be potential, like over at the dump and stuff.
Yeah, they actually did that near my house on County Road, there's solar panels out there. And that was a deal that was made with the gas and electric.
Oh, yeah, they put it at, yeah, I saw that.
They did, they did. And I could ask my husband about that and see how that, what that entails. But I'm sure there's some money that we have to put into it prior to, they don't, you know...
Oh, but there's some federal subsidies, but I don't know if Mr. Patel is going to go for that, so.
All right, not to cut anybody off, open time for the public. Hi, Bill.
I was retiring.
Hearing none, hearing none, sub-lit board updates. Moulton, report on findings in meeting with departments.
I think you skipped me, Mike.
Oh, I did.
And you skipped one more thing, too. You skipped the 4.3, standard performance review.
I thought we were putting that off.
We are, but we need to come up with a standard way to approve, appraise, evaluate someone.
Evaluation.
So in, in the packet, there's three different things that we were able to find you. Liz was able to come up with one, I found another, and in the nick of time, Art Lawrence was actually working on something because he saw this was on the agenda, so he was putting something together for P...
EQB.
Thank you, yeah, the P Board. And when he was putting that together, and he emailed it to me, I was like, "Oh, this is awesome, at least it's something to work with."
Right.
So I threw it into your packets right before, it's a little bit, I think, above that one.
With the stamp on the top?
Yeah, it's probably in the no piece.
So that's something we all need to look at.
I think we need to look at it and maybe send whatever you like or dislike, or don't want to see, or want to ask, and if we send it to Heather. I will have him put it all together, but I think it needs input from the whole board.
How'd you get the Bay State Health one?
My mom wrote that. Hi, Mom.
Where's you know your resources?
All right, now, now I'll give you open time for the administrator.
Okay, awesome. All right, so some updates from the last meeting. One of the things I was asked to look into was the Department Transportation Sidewalk Project. I had emailed DOT to ensure that they have followed all the proper steps, had not heard back from them. But I did email them on March 12th, they do not have any contact information online, so I was not able to get ahold of them via phone. But the folks who are working on the project, Conservation Commission assured me that they have the contact information for the engineer, so I may actually take that from them and start that direction. I also, let's see, received a fact sheet on the project from the Conservation Commission and published a lot of the facts on Facebook and a few on Twitter, so people have some of that information. The next public meeting is also on March 31st at 7:00 PM, that's being held by the Conservation Commission.
Is somebody from the Department of Transportation going to be at that one?
I don't have the answer to that question.
They're supposed to be at the last one, and they...
I will be at that meeting, that's all I can tell you. And I did provide an update to Mr. Coombs, so he's on the same page. Capital improvements, that was one of the things that I was asked to look into last meeting. So I have a couple of things on that one. We had a bylaw on June 15th, 1998, that requires us to have a committee of five residents, each serving three-year terms, and they are appointed by the board. Purpose of the committee is to handle major tangible assets, projects purchased, undertaken at intervals of not less than one year, and having a useful life of at least one year costing at least $5,000. There are five members on this committee, at least two of the members have resigned, Bruce Coombs and Tom Whitley. Nancy Lombard seemed to have moved out of town. Tim, is that, that's your, okay. Tim Huber may possibly still be interested if he's working with a serious group of people, however, his term expired in 2012. William Colletta is still interested in being on board, and his term expired in 2013.
Bill, you want that on it? Chair, yes.
Okay.
Already on top of it. And one more gentleman, Derek from the Tax Office. Yes, it looks like at one point he might have been appointed, but no official paperwork was transmitted to the clerk's office, and he was never sworn in. I checked with the clerk's official records this afternoon, so I have no additional updates on him. So as it stands right now, on your four, or committee of five people, you have two people who are interested but have expired terms. And in order to actually have it, you need five, and they actually have to have current appointments, and we're required to have this by bylaw, and we're also required to have it so Donna and Vicky can essentially do their work and not get turned away when they go to do financial paperwork.
I make a motion to appoint Bill Colletta?
Second.
If elected, will you serve?
What does Bill think of that?
Excuse me?
If you're, if elected, will you serve?
Yes, I did last time.
We have a motion in a second, put Mr. Colletta back on the Capitol Committee. There's, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, you have our stats.
Find some friends.
I was going to say, now, you got...
Why don't you, why don't you hand Duncan Donis around 9:00 o'clock in the morning?
They're there earlier than that.
Did you want to nominate the second person as well?
Before we get into this, I'm thinking all of a sudden, we need, these need to be posted, I think.
They're, it's a committee.
All right, so you think it doesn't need to be posted?
I wouldn't think it needs to be.
All right, then let's make a motion.
Wouldn't they be considered volunteer positions?
I would say you're right.
In the tribunal, if they have no elected, you're appointing them, so.
So who's the other person?
The other gentleman is Tim Huber.
That'll be paid?
No. Actually, you get the same amount we get.
Yeah, yeah.
You get the, you get the same thing we do, Bill.
I see. I appoint, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tim Huber to Capitol, Capitol Improvement?
That's what I thought it was, that's what I think it is, Dave.
Capitol Improvement, yeah, so that's my motion.
Second.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor? So we need two more, we need to get a thing out.
We need three more.
Three more.
I can post it on Facebook and Twitter.
And Channel 5. If there's anyone listening tonight that would be interested to be on the Capital Improvement Program, please contact Heather in the Board of Selectmen's office, please, thank you.
And we can talk about it at the caucus, too, there's usually a bunch of people there.
I'm not going to be able to make that.
Okay. So some, some more of my report. So one more thing on the Finance, Finance Committee, actually, when I had inquired to them on some things that they thought might be of interest for capital improvements, they had suggested vehicles for the fire and police department, also ambulance equipment, and I believe the capital stabilization account has approximately $126,000, according to John Martin's email. Okay, next, individual department meetings and observations. So I've been moving around department to department, I had been up to the, or down to the Treasurer's Department, and today I went over to the Highway Department. Treasurer's Department, the water billing, staff is going to be moved from the clerk's office to the Treasurer's office very shortly. We are working on trying to combine the space we already have in the Treasurer's office. What we're going to look to do is use a KVM switch to actually be able to flip back and forth from the two different hard drives using one monitor and one set of keyboard-mouse combo, so that they don't have to set up a whole second desk setting, just for this purpose. Once we do that, we'll alert everyone on the website, Channel 5, Facebook, and Twitter, that if they want to pay a water bill, they're going to now move over one office.
Do we have a Twitter account?
Yeah. You have a Twitter account, where have you been?
At Town Southampton. They haven't followed me back, though.
We have eight followers.
You have to get a Twitter account, so you can, so you can tweet.
How much does that cost?
It's free.
It's free.
It's free.
Do you have Twitter, Mr. Colletta?
Yes.
You tweet?
Yes.
I might have to find you later. We can be friends.
You can find me on Facebook.
We're already friends.
Yes, we are.
Going back to my report. So in the Treasurer's Department, they also have a couple of issues with some communication technology items. The fax line and phone line in Donna's office is actually the same line, so sometimes it's causing problems where someone will call in and it will go to fax, or she'll pick up the phone and hear a really scary sound. I'm working to see if we can't get Verizon to come in and just put in another phone line. That might be the simplest solution. And we also have computers outdated and dying. We've been conducting an IT audit of most of the building. Art Lawrence has been helping me with that, which is very helpful. We've found out so far that we have five computers running on XP. For anyone who has not got the memo in the world of IT and computers, and I probably have lost my memo at this point, and we'll see if I can find it. XP is going to be discontinued by Windows very shortly, which means they are no longer going to be supporting it. So anyone who's running on Windows XP is going to be out of luck. Windows XP support is ending. After April 8th, your XP computer will no longer receive automatic updates that help protect your personal information. Even if you have antivirus, God bless your software, your computer will still not be fully secure. Why Windows XP support is ending? Windows XP is 12 years old. It's typical to end service for software as it gets older and technology evolves. Most of us have replaced cell phones and even our cars over the last 12 years. Now it's time to replace your Windows XP computer with a new PC. Or you can check to see if your Windows XP can run the new Windows. So there's a way we can check to see if some of the computers can run new Windows. The problem is, most of the computers, four out of five of them anyway, have already been allocated to be replaced in the new year with the budget. The bigger problem is, I don't know if we can wait that long. I talked to Vicky earlier today, and they said, you know, "Do we have any funds we can play with here at all? I know we're getting really thin at this time of year, is there anything we can do?" She suggested the first thing, you know, we start with the individual departments and see if they have any extra money floating around in any of their expense accounts that we can play with. So I've been working with Donna to see what we can find there. I haven't worked yet with the assessors there, another department has issues with the computer. One of the other ones is Richard over in Health Department, is the building inspector, and then my computer, of course, is going to die any moment, so.
And don't you need another phone line in your office?
We do need another phone line in my office, only if you'd like to actually talk to me during the day.
So when we upgraded, the other bills, these were all refurbished, what we got the last time around?
Well, and that's, that's the problem, too, is being able to go with an XP system that's already on a refurbished computer and try and put a new system in, it's not going to, you know...
We save money back then.
And now, now we just have to bite the bullet. The good news is, I've been looking at a lot of the systems, and you know, for 700, 800 bucks, we can replace it. We can do an all-in-one unit, which is nice. For those who aren't familiar with the all-in-one units, it essentially looks just like a monitor on your desktop, except you don't have a hard drive, so you don't have to worry about playing with that anymore. They're very user-friendly, you have a DVD drive right inside, plenty of USB ports for yourself to use. The screen's generally a little bit bigger, I think the size we were looking at is about 23 inches. So it just, I find them much user, more user-friendly, which is nice. Plus it saves space. Huh?
And what's the cost?
It's 700, 800 bucks, which is about the same as the other one.
But you can still use the old keyboard and mouse?
You actually get a new keyboard and mouse with it. Isn't that nice? They come with it. It's an all-in-one thing, and it comes with Windows Pro. And that's 500 gigabytes for...
But who does, who does the install and the IT support?
Heather, Heather does it.
Yeah, didn't you see the sign outside my door, do you? It says, "I administer a human resources, IT purchasing agent," and is there any more? I think that's all I get for now.
Good, that's it.
But we add from daily.
All right, I was just curious, because we're clocking about getting IT services, we had some in the past, and...
I have an update on that as we go. So then I, then I checked out Highway Department today. They, too, have two computers, and both of their computers run on XP. They do not have a server over in their little shindig they have over there. What each of them have, after much discovery by Randall and myself, is they each have a backup drive for each of the computers. And we thought at one point that Randall actually had a network drive, it doesn't appear he does, though. It appears, it just says it's network, but it really is only connected to his computer. And then the other computer has a backup drive just for that computer. Server, so this weekend, we had the fun of installing our server, it's very exciting. The company we used is Envision, and I can't tell you the second word, but I already forgot. Envision Solutions, there we go. They're actually a Rhode Island company, they have offices out of Rhode Island and Waltham. And the engineer drove up from Rhode Island, and the sales rep, who didn't need to come, but came just to make sure we had good customer service, drove in from Waltham and stayed the entire day. They were here from about 10:00 to 4:15. We had some issues in the morning with the password for the server. It appears at one point, one of our prior IT companies may not, may have inadvertently changed our password when installing a backup server. So there was a little miscommunication on that part, but after several hours, or about 45 minutes of their time, and $199 later, we were able to get back into our server. We are now all set. All of the information was transferred over, mostly during the day, the rest of it was transferred virtually Sunday. Softwrite is now completely transferred over, that's a software program that the Treasurer's Office and the Accountant's Office use to do all of the books. We did that last night, we finished the transfer this morning with the help of Softwrite, Envision, and myself and Donna going from computer to computer to do the mapping of that. The cost for the installation of the server was about $3,530, it might be a little bit less than that, we'll find out. And the cost of the server itself, just for the actual box, was $2,407.03. These are things we did not budget for at the beginning of the year. I do not believe we knew these things were going to happen. Or at least, I don't believe we budgeted, perhaps we did, I'm not sure.
So a free cash left, right?
I don't know what we have for free cash left. I know that we've been killing the Finance Committee's money. Let's see, we did the problems, okay. Last Wednesday, I did a tour of the schools, I toured Norris and Hampshire Regional with the superintendent. That was interesting, exciting. Annual Town Report, we are still working on it, all materials are due to our office, no later than Thursday, as in two days from today, I will send a reminder again to folks. But some of the departments have got stuff in, some haven't, so I'm assuming I'm going to be chasing a few items on that one. We've gone through computer issues, new computers, new, new software. So as we were doing the IT audit around town, we noticed that a lot of people are in different versions of Office. For some reason, some people have Office 2010, or 2013, some people have Office 2007. I don't know. At some point, I'd like us all to be on the same, same playing field, so it's easier to fix, it's easier to maintain. If we have everyone on Windows 7, everyone on Office, whatever it is, at least it's easier all around. Someone has a problem with one, we can figure out the problem, we can fix it on another one. Another news, Facebook has over 100 friends, we doubled since Friday. Friday, we had 50, Monday, we had 100. And Twitter has about seven followers. But all of our Twitter posts are now being posted on our website, so you can see all the live Twitter feeds right there.
Is there any sort of filter on that?
I'm the only one who posts. And the only thing you see on the Twitter feeds is my posts, to my knowledge. And no one responds on Twitter, everyone responds on Facebook, is what I've seen. I have seven, we have seven followers.
All right, I just did the one, it's showing up on the webpage.
Oh, that would be wonderful, I can hardly wait. Scheduling of things. One of the last meetings, Mike had asked for an all-boards-commissions meeting to be scheduled on April 1st. I didn't know if we wanted to look at a couple of different things going on at the same time. We need to figure out when the board wants to schedule Vicky's performance review, when we'd like to schedule a meeting of all the different aggregate energy folks, and also when we want to do the all-boards-and-commissions meeting. The aggregate folks had preliminarily penciled in April 1st as a date they could do.
I think it's more important that we have all-boards, because then they get to meet you. So I think that should be a priority coming up.
I would agree, if they haven't already all stopped into my office.
Well, are you saying the others more, we need to do the others first?
Well, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, I think it's just going to be harder to get all the aggregate folks into the room at the same time, and if they're available, a good majority of them on the 1st, that might be easier to go with.
Now, we're talking, this is the residential stuff?
This is residential and municipal, both, but mostly they're going to probably focus on the residential, the municipal stuff.
No, we should do the municipal first.
Well, you have till June, we won't do it till June.
Right, exactly.
We should wait till June to do that, because it must be when the market's trending. So we just, we just went back to Wemco today, I wouldn't do anything for 60 days.
Then we can wait.
Just so you know, so you can make a more informed decision.
Right, oh, absolutely, no, I'm not saying for them to come in and let's make, choose one company. I just want them to come in, introduce themselves, so that when we get to that point...
Maybe we could do that at a later point when we have a better idea.
Maybe like another month or so.
I'd say 60 days, because then you get a sense of what the market trends.
But the other thing, though, the, you're trying to get the residential aggregation, you know, contract. It's gone to our attorney already, and that's got to be dealt with, with HCOG. So, I mean, you know, he's already called you at home, and...
Called me a number of times.
Yeah, so that's got to be dealt with.
Well, using this thing right now, from what you're telling us, probably, it's probably a no, as far as HCOG is concerned right now.
Well, there's a lot of questions there, you know, I think... I think the townspeople need to understand that before we start messing with their heating bills. And we should have a public forum so that we can discuss it, and then find out if it's fixable or variable. There's a lot of questions there.
I would, I would put it off. I may just say, I would just wait a little bit. I mean, I just...
You want to get some information on it? All right, so what, Heather's asking a question whether we do...
So you want the all-boards and commissions meeting April 1st?
Would be my recommendation on what the boards...
And then what about Vicky's performance review?
Well, what's, we have one more Tuesday, we have next Tuesday, right?
We do, but you don't have a standard form.
consensus on what we're, what we're judging.
You need a couple of weeks to do that.
Well, maybe we have it, maybe we schedule that for the 8th, and if you're going to have an all-boards meeting, chances are somebody on there is going to be evaluated. Why don't we give it to them to look at, too?
Say that again?
Please.
Why don't you give them a completed form to look at, too? If you're going to have everybody here, to have an all-boards meeting, right?
There's no, the question, your question is who else is going to be evaluated?
Yeah.
Well, it would be Randall, it would be Heather at some point in time.
Police chief?
Fire chief.
Police chief.
Fire chief.
Will the police chief get evaluated? He's not on contract.
He doesn't have a contract. He's never had a contract, as far as I know.
I don't think they were evaluated, no.
Why don't you just put it on for the 8th? Regardless of what I just said, just...
Vicky's performance review?
And that gives us...
And that's, and I don't have a problem. I won't be here the 8th, and that's fine. You guys can take care of it. So, take care of it on the 8th. She's overdue.
Maybe if we give it to you before, then you could fill it out and send it back.
That's an odd thought. Is that it?
We need to set up a date, unless you want to get back to me, on a joint conference with the Finance Committee to do the budget.
Well, I think that would be more up to them when they get their...
Get their stuff together.
Or get their stuff together. But we, I think you ought to pencil it into my guess is...
What are we talking about?
When's the warrant have to be posted?
10 days before, I think.
When's the annual issue?
May...
Come back three weeks from the annual.
May, I was, I was going to suggest, what's the meeting after the 8th, 7/15?
So is that, is that within time to do the posting and everything for the warrants?
Usually Reggie has it at the bottom of the agenda. No, we don't have it anymore.
I lost my agenda.
On caucus, the last thing that's on here is the town caucus. It's some, it's sometime in the first, is it the election that's May 1st, May 2nd? I mean, you must be going.
Well, the election is May 6th.
Annual town caucus, yeah, it doesn't, it's not there. It's usually in there.
The caucus...
The caucus is the 27th.
May 5th is what, the election?
The election.[1557.02]